Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Lindup Board of Education meeting to order at 5:30 PM. May have a roll call, please. Dr. Jackson?
Yes. Board member Griffin?
Absent.
Absent. Board member Hannah?
Present.
Griffin is present.
Thank you. Board member Hannah?
Present.
Board member Dawson?
Present.
Board member Joyner Herit?
Present.
Board member Morris?
Present.
Board member Taylor?
Present.
Board member Williams Woolford?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. This time, we would like to pause for a moment of silence. Please turn your cell phones off or to silence moments fine as well. Just like to, you know, mention the loss of Colton Powell this week, yesterday. What a big loss for the nation. Just pausing for a moment of silence, remembering his family as well as his legacy. Thank you very much.
Today, board, we would like to bring to you our spotlight on success. We had our three seventh grade electives. We learned about one of them last board meeting with our forensic science. This time, we're taking a look at our amazing film literature elective. They use comparative reading in this elective a lot, and they use their critical reading skills to look back on the text and compare what the difference was in the film that they're watching with it and in the text they're reading about World War II. It's giving them great social study skills, and it's preparing them for world history classes as well.
Thank you. Without further ado, go right ahead.
I'm always scared to speak in here. Oh, I sound great. Okay, so my two wonderful students, Tyler Ford, Cassandra Moore, are going to talk about film lit. I chose them because they're going to speak nice and loud, and they're very enthusiastic, and they're very engaged in class. But before we do, we are going to show you a little trailer about my class. So that was my trailer. I chose this class because as much as I love to read, I also love film. So I thought kids would have a great time not only reading books that were made into movies, but comparing and contrasting them. And I will stop talking because the reason my spotlight is for my students. So I'm going to toss it over to them. Cassandra and Tyler, take it away.
Hello. Hello, my name is Cassandra, and I'm Miss Davy's seventh grade literature, film literature class. Film literature class is us reading books and watching the movies after. We read books and we do the comprehension questions. But little bit into the book, we re- we watch what we read already. And then we read again, and then we watch what we've read. Um, film literature is basically about learning shots. In the beginning of the school year, she taught us how to, what the shots were, like extremely close up shots, close shots, medium shots, and long shots. So when we watched the movie, we'll be able to tell which shot it is. What we're reading right now is The Boy in the Striped Pajamas. The Boy in the Striped Pajamas is a book based on the Holocaust. The, what, while we're reading this book, it's to learn about the Holocaust. Because, because when, before coming into this classroom, we weren't, I didn't know nothing about the Holocaust. And it was able to teach us more and more about the Holocaust. And we also, we're also going to be reading more of child, children's book, like Shrek and The Diary of the Whoopi Kid. The Holocaust has taught me that, um, that, uh, that we're, it was always going to happen. It's also connected to Corona, and it's also connected to slavery because it, uh, our family were impacted by the Holocaust or slavery or Corona. Because when Corona happened, many people lost their family members and impacted them very badly. And the quote I'm going to be saying today is, everything that has happened had to happen, and everything that had happened couldn't be stopped by Dwayne Wayne Dwyer.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Boyd, and I'm a part of Ms. Davy's seventh grade film literature class. I would like to speak to you today about my experience in film literature. Right now, I like this class very much. Not only is it a great, not only is it a great learning experience, it is a great class in general. I like to compare and contrast the books that we read to the movies that we watch. I also like the books that we read in class. For instance, we're reading a book called The Boy in the Striped Pajamas. It's a historic fiction, uh, made about this kid named Bruno, who, who becomes friends with a Jewish kid. His father's in the German military fighting the war. And it's great to see two different perspectives from two different people on what's going on in their lives. I like the class because it's a great class. You're not just sitting there learning. It's also entertaining, good class to be in.
He did great. They did great. Thank you. So do you guys have any questions for us?
Any comments from any board members? I do, I do want to mention that I can tell that you read the book because both of you all, you know, spoke with such details about your books. You know, and I think about everything that happened had to happen. That's, that's kind of deep. That's a deep comment. And both of you all, you know, even the comparison of the Holocaust, Corona, and slavery, it's pretty deep as well.
Making a lot of connections both here and now, self-connections, world connections.
Thank you both. Thank you both. You both did excellent. I can tell he read as well.
He did.
He did well. Come on back.
She's giving you a compliment.
You did it well. Thank you very much. Give him a hand, guys. Thank you all so much.
Madam President, Madam President?
Yes.
I believe our student board member had something to say.
Go right ahead.
What's up, Joel?
I just want to say thank you both for coming. You all did an amazing job. And this also shows how when we bring in a more in- interactive learning environment, how much engaged the students will become. I know if we were just sitting down, learning World War II, we wouldn't have made these amazing connections as they did. And I was sitting in Ms. Davy's room to about five o'clock, and we were talking. And when we read, when I looked over the book and I looked over the premise of the book, it was really amazing, and it showed how these two people from two different worlds can come together. It was really beautiful, and I'm glad to see that our students are loving it as well. It's an inter- it's an innovative class with an innovative teacher.
I try. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you all for giving us a chance to speak today. I would also like to thank Ms. Davies for being a great teacher.
Wow. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Very good. That is great. Any public comments, Dr. Jackson?
There are none.
Okay. That's really great. Just appreciate so much sharing. You all agree?
Yeah, I mean, that was just amazing, just looking at the teacher.
Exactly. That's exactly what it is. Her excitement.
You can't get no more excited than that, can you?
Yeah, I'm on another subject. You're right, and I just still had to bring it back. You're absolutely right.
Right, I mean, that's like out of this world right there. But it make you want to.
Yes.
Like they say, you know how you always hear that thing that say make learning fun, but you're like, where's the fun at?
It's in that classroom. The fun's in that classroom.
That's a class you like as well?
I loved her class, and we had her class during COVID. And when I tell you she's an innovative teacher, she doesn't just teach social studies just in the curriculum. She teaches to the standards, but she goes out of her way to make sure that her students are interacting. And I mean, she really believes in building relationship with students, and I think that's incredible. I mean, she sits, and I mean, during COVID, we were just in her classroom on Google Duo, not Google Duo, Google Meet, and we were just sitting there, and we would come in during our lunch period and talk to her, and she would just make these new innovative lessons that we have never seen before. And she's, she's just an amazing teacher in general.
And think about, we wouldn't have the opportunity, hadn't we had this, to showcase? It's so important.
Before you move forward, this is Cheryl Griffin. I'd like to say that having read The Boy in the Striped Pajamas, I think that was a perfect platform to start children on because it gave them a different perspective from the adult perspective of the horrors of the Holocaust. And it showed it through a child's eyes, and I thought that was very innovative for the teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin, for that. Okay, so we can get off this subject. We all still so excited. I'm sorry. For your request, I won't violate our own rules anymore. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. So there was a FOIA request from NBC Five asking about any and all information that had been reported to the treasurer's office and how, what was not or had to be paid back or anything of that matter. They are in board book for you to see, and it has been answered. Any questions?
Pretty detailed, huh?
Pretty detailed, very.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Upcoming events and correspondence. Our board secretary, do we have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. No correspondence? And please read the upcoming events to yourselves. Thank you so much. Moving on to consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Any takers? Thank you.
Well, yeah. I recommend approval of, is that what I'm doing, the payroll? No, where I'm at?
Consider agenda.
Right here. Sorry about that. I make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda, including payroll for September 21st, 2021 to October 19th, 2021, in the amount of $452,030.54. Accounts payable for September 21st, 2021 to October 19th, 2021, in the amount of $227,807.30. Activities account reconciliation for August 2021. Second read of Press Plus issue 107. Five-year review with district edits as presented. And second read of Press Plus issue 107, policy update and edits as presented.
And a second, please.
Board member Hannah, a second.
Do any board members have any questions, anything that they want removed? If there are none, roll call, please.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Morris?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Williams Woolford? Board member Williams Woolford? Board member Taylor?
I abstain. I wasn't at the last minute meeting due to work.
And board member Herit, Joyner Herit?
Yay.
Board member David?
Yay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving on to old business. Discussion on tenure life safety priority items. Mr. Berannick? And Mr. Valentine?
Good evening, Board of Education, staff members and community members. We did receive our preliminary new items and new tenure life safety updated items and schedule. It is posted in board book for you to review. Pretty substantial, some of the items that are out there on it. I also gave everybody a handout that has the items kind of broken down out there as to what year potentially they could be addressed. And then it's a three-year cycle, starting this in the summer of 2023 for the big projects, including then 24 and then 25 is the wish list items that are out there. The items that are for 2022. The biggest thing that we want to mention on that one is, Mr. Valentine believes that he can tackle these in-house and beat the price that our architect has out there for the 2022 items, which would be a cost savings by keeping it in-house. So it will be a cost for 2022, but it will not be the total of the $198,000 as per what Mr. Valentine believes he can do to do those projects at a more cost-efficient rate for the, the school. The one things that I wanted to press and really stress here, if we look at the items for the summer of 2023, those are our big items that are out there, that is the roof projects. And the only item that is a carryover from our life safety report is the tuck point. So between the roofs and the tuck pointing, those are the big items. If we sum that up in the summer of 2023, the base price, that's just what they have factored in for the base price is $2 million. And then you have to add in 10% for design fees, 10% construction contingency, and then 8% for the architect and engineer. Roughly 28% added onto that, bringing total cost for the roofs roughly about 2.56. And then you add in the tuck pointing, I mean, I'm sorry, the mechanical coming up the following summer, correct? Mr. Valentine? Oh, the same summer. And then, I'm sorry, then the summer of 2024 are the architectural and some of the stuff around the inside of the building that need to be addressed. But those two summers of '23 and '24 would be a grand total of $3 million. And then, of course, we asked the architect and the engineer when they came through here to go through and come up with some new innovative ideas. And we had some wish list items on this tenure life safety. Those are kind of highlighted in the yellow for the summer of 2025. But those, like you said, would be discussed with the board, with the board moving forward on it. But we wanted to kind of lay this out into what would be kind of the immediate items that would need to be addressed in the summer of '22, summer of '23, and then '24. I know it's a lot of information that was given in board book and with the handout out there. But what I want to stress here is that we do have significant costs moving forward here within the next 10 years on it to keep our building in tip-top shape.
Mr. Valentine, you want to talk about the work that's going to happen this summer?
Sure. So the architect pointed out some items that we feel that we do in-house, which is like replacing all the water fountains, updating to the bottle fill water fountains, relabeling the classrooms. There's some door work that's going to be done this summer as well, going to replace some metal doors and also some of the hardware on most of the doors, like the door closers and the door hinges on some doors that's not operating correctly. And I am still looking through this list. There's going to be some more probably on here that we can possibly do in-house, too. This is just a real review of it right there. Any questions about the list or work that's going to be done?
No.
I know in our finance meeting, we talked a little bit about the cost for some of the items. I think it's great to have a library at that cost. But maybe we, you know, we talked about the value of trying to find, you know, a happy medium, you know, because it's great to have a state of the art. Because if you go in that library, we all agree, it's a, it's a bit different. And it would, I think, updating is definitely needed. And I like the idea of the labs and the reading area, those update. Those are really serious area, learning areas, right? But we'll talk about it another time because I don't want to labor this. It's not the subject, but we were making this on the base of something else that we're going to move on. That'll be something we'll have to discuss as a board at another time. Okay. So are there any other cases, Ms. Taylor or Ms. Griffin?
Uh, no. No, no comment. Thank you.
Ms. Williams Woolford? Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you both so much.
No, no.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the attendance to the West Cook Dinner.
Board member Hannah?
Cheryl Griffin? I'll go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the attendance at the West Cook Dinner meeting on Thursday, October 24th, 21st, 2021, at M. Crest Branko Hall in Elmwood at a cost of $40 per person.
A second, please?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Board member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Morris?
Yay.
Board member Joyner Herit?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member David?
Yay.
Board member Williams Woolford?
Yay.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the regular closed session minute meetings, please.
I make a motion that the board approve the regular open session?
Closed. Oh, yeah, open.
Open, open session meeting minutes for September 21st, 2021 as presented.
A second, Board member man.
Any questions, revisions? Roll call, please.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Joyner Herit?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board member Morris?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
I abstain. I was not at the last meeting.
Board member Williams Woolford?
Yeah.
Board member David?
Yay.
Motion carries. Need motion for the next?
I make a motion that the board approve the regular closed session meeting minutes for September 21st, 2021 as presented.
Board member Hannah, a second.
Any questions, revisions? There are none, roll call, please.
Board member David?
Abstain.
Board member Williams Woolford?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Abstain.
Board member Morris?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Abstain.
Board member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Joyner Herit?
Yay. Motion carries.
I make a motion that the board approve board member attendance to the annual Joint Chamber, Bellwood, Broadview, and Maywood Scholarship Awards banquet at the cost of $100 per person to be held on Thursday, October 14th, 2021, from 5 to 8 at the Sheet Metal Workers Local 73, 40, 45, 50 Roosevelt Road, Hillside to honor superintendent Dr. Janice Jackson for Broadview Community Educational Leader of the Year Award.
Board member Hannah, a second.
Any discussion or comments?
I just would like to say one thing. You truly did deserve it, Dr. Jackson. We truly do have one of the best superintendents in this entire, excuse me, I might be wrong, but I'm biased with this. In the entire District of 209, we have one of the best superintendents we can have. I mean, she is advocating for students. Before we even thought about having a student board member, I knew she was advocating for us. She has been doing an amazing job since I met her in second grade, and I asked, "Were you my girl Jackson's sister?" And she still continues to be a woman of leadership who I look up to immensely and is one of the reasons why I'm the person I am today. So, Dr. Jackson, you truly did earn this award.
Any other comments from any other board members, please?
I hate I wasn't there. I had the days mixed up.
Dr. J? It was, it got your name on it, so it was already for you. Keep doing what you're doing. Okay? Keep striving. As you can see, they see it. Everybody sees it, not just us. So keep doing it. And there's many more of those from where that came from, from other people, not just from Broadview Business Association. Okay? All right.
Have a safe trip. All right, we'll hear you.
Any other additional board members? I'll tell you this.
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Dr. Jackson, congratulations. I'm glad that you're being recognized for the phenomenal job that you're doing at Lindup, and we truly appreciate you for all that you're doing. You know, our children continue to strive toward success and with your leadership, I'm sure one day we'll achieve Blue Ribbon status. Thank you for all that you're doing.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I think it's great. You know, everyone always comes to you and tell you what such a good job you're doing. I think this plaque and the award, everything more or less cements how everyone feels about the job that you're doing. And again, we do thank you for that.
One more thing, one more thing. I knew, I knew Dr. J had something going on here. When my baby comes home and says, "Hey Daddy, I seen Dr. J today." Like, who is Dr. J? How you know her? But my baby's just in first grade now, right? Kindergarten, first, first grade. And the babies know who you are, J. And that says a lot. My baby, this her first time in school. Last year, it was all due to COVID, so everything was online. Zay loved you. But when Nia comes home and say, "Hey Dad, guess what? Dr. J was in my classroom. I got to see Dr. J today." It just, it just shows that everybody here is following in your footsteps, J. So keep doing it.
Like Mr. Hannah said, I'm sorry. You do do a good job because I'm going to just say this from the student perspective because I see her all the time walking the hallways, going into classes, saying good morning. A lot of people don't know who the superintendent is in their district. And we have the blessing of having our superintendent in-house, but we also have the blessing of having a person who believes in leadership and going inside the classroom and building relationships, not only with students, but with our entire staff, with our entire community. My grandmother loves Dr. Jackson. My family, who's not even from this state, knows about Dr. Jackson and how amazing she's doing. So when I say we have an innovative superintendent and just an entirely innovative administration along with her, this is the person who shows awesome leadership in everything that we do. So again, thank you, Dr. Jackson. Seriously, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Okay. Congratulations, Dr. Jackson.
Any other comments from any other board members? Okay, I will say that Dr. Jackson is the longest-serving board superintendent since my board tenure. I always communicate that we, as a board, probably had to grow. The growing pains in every position, the board had to grow, superintendent had to go grow. Our board members aren't perfect. I, I fall short. And I'm, I'm going to tell you this for you. You need almost community leader of the year just to be able to sometimes manage the challenges you have. Serving us sometimes. But I'll tell you this. At that event on last Thursday, it was an event for Dr. Jackson, but she was caring about everybody else, even there. I thought to myself, even sitting there, she's worried about that everybody is okay there. It's definitely well deserved. I wrote on my Facebook page that they don't even understand the challenges that you have and all you give up. They don't, no one understands that. Nobody could see it. But what they can see is, is outstanding, but what they don't see, they would be even more amazed. So I'm thankful that they gave it to you, that you earned it through this COVID world. You know, it's been very difficult for everybody, but I'm, I'm sure it'd be on your shoulders. So you have the successes, but you also have the challenges of the district. We know that. To say thank you so much. Thank you for hanging with us. Hey. Okay. I need a roll call, please. Did we second it? We already seconded, right? Okay. Roll call, please.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member David.
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert.
Yay.
Board Member Joyner-Herit.
Yay.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the close of the district, please.
I make a motion that the board approve to close the district on Thursday.
You missed something. Number four.
Oops. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion on tax levy. Thank you. Mr. Baranek? We have to amend that anyway, you're right.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education, staff members and community members. It's hard to believe it's that time again for our annual tax levy. So this is just some preliminary data that I want to share with the board. This is a pretty accurate snapshot of what will be coming at the November board meeting for the tax levy. Just to kind of go through this, the tax levy is a request from the school district to the county for funds to operate the district. Funds levied in twenty one will be used subsequent, in the subsequent year for operating expenses in twenty two. Property taxes are the largest revenue source that the district has. And obviously, we look at each individual fund that we have to determine what we are going to levy in particular funds. Next slide. Um, once again, the big thing with the tax levy is we have to look at the entire taxing boundaries within the district. So we look at all of our taxing bodies within the Broadview community that pay taxes to help support the school. The amount requested by the district has been captured by balloon levying at four point nine nine percent. In Cook County, the school district is tax capped at whatever the restriction is for this current year CPI, that is the Consumer Price Index inflation. This year CPI that will be used is one point four percent. And then with the request for four point nine nine, the balloon levy, the district will capture all of the funds that is entitled to. The hard part with levying is you need to predict what is potential new property, new EAV that's coming on the books that the district would be entitled to. Just know that the district will only get one point four percent plus one point four percent of any additional properties that come on. We flip to the next slide. Just some key data. When you're looking at the tax levy, we look at last year's property tax extension. Um, what we have to also look at is that we abated roughly three hundred and eighty one thousand back to the taxpayers for a property tax relief grant. The importance with that is you need to keep that in your tax base while also giving back money to the taxpayers, shifting some of the burden from the local to the state. So we did pick up additional state dollars in our evidence-based funding one as part of that property tax relief grant. So with that being said, we take our extension plus the abatement amount that gives us our tax base. I'm going to request four point nine nine, which is the balloon levy. It is under the five percent for the truth and taxation hearing. If you were to go over five percent, you're supposed to have a public hearing. To be transparent with the community, I like to hold the public hearing just in case there is any type of questions from the community as to why the school district would be requesting X amount of dollars for their levy. Once again, if we look at this, estimated levies on the left-hand side of the screen is what would be submitted to the county. And then on the right-hand side is the estimate as to what they would reduce down and you would capture the one point four percent plus the anticipated new property that would be coming on the books. So if we look at the left, we're going to request six point seven million. But in all actuality, we're probably going to be somewhere near six point four nine six is what the district would capture for the levy for this upcoming two thousand and twenty one tax levy. If we look at the requirements for the next steps, when I did this presentation, it had it for December. We're looking to push it up to November after discussing with Dr. Jackson on it. But some of the legal requirements that would be out there, we would publish, publish a notice in the paper. It has to be in the paper for at least for, it can't be longer than fourteen days, but no less than seven days to have the public hearing. We would have the certificates ready for the board to adopt. We would have the Cook County requests that we would have signed by the board. And then ultimately, if the board approves it, it would be submitted to the county. And the one thing that would be nice about getting it done at the next one, then you're not waiting to try to get it filed by the official last day, which is the last Tuesday in December. This leaves plenty of time to get it. And this is the most important thing as far as requesting funds to operate the district. At this time, is there any questions in regards to tax levy two thousand and twenty one? So the reason that I, I have the Ed Fund, because that one is our largest fund, the county, I have the county reduce our Ed Fund actual funds to reduce it. So if I went through all these, what I'm trying to do is not have a huge influx of dollars in the different areas. If I look up there, the one fund, for example, is IMRF Social Security. We have a pretty hefty fund balance in those. That's why I have those very low so that we start spending those down. And because the Ed Fund has no cap on what I can levy in that, that's why I put the most into the Ed Fund, which also allows the district to be the most flexible if you had to move money to different accounts. And then, of course, being it's our largest fund, that's the fund that I elect for the county to reduce down.
And Education Fund now is the only one you could transfer out of, right?
No, you can still transfer out of it, but it allows you the most flexibility.
I just meant, yeah, I was going to say, isn't that the only one you can transfer out of? They used to have it, we used to be able to transfer out of transportation too, right? But they stopped that.
Yeah, because then they put no cap on the Ed Fund that you could levy X amount. So it gave the districts more.
Flexibility.
Um, flexibility. It's like you said, not have to do that transfer from transportation, which was causing a lot of districts would levy super heavy in transportation and then transfer because they had no cap.
Any more questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baranek. I need a recommendation to close the district from Thursday, December twenty third and or to Thursday, December thirtieth. That's what it reads. But I know that the motion is a little different, but please look at the, how it's written. I need a.
The twentieth through the twenty third.
So it's the twen-, so it's the twentieth through the twenty third?
No, the twentieth and the. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's not.
And the thirtieth.
For the calendar.
Oh, just those two?
The twenty third and the thirtieth.
Okay. All right.
My apologies.
So when you do the motion on the, you see the correction, we can correct it on the, you can say the motion for the thirtieth. Go right ahead, Mr. Woody. Mr. Morris.
I'm, I make a motion that the board approve to close the district from December twenty third.
Yeah.
From December twenty third, two thousand and twenty one through Thursday, December twentieth.
And.
Read, read, read it specifically like it's written. Go right ahead. Is this the two days? It's not between?
Oh, my bad.
It's okay.
I make a motion that the board approve to close the district on Thursday, December twenty third, two thousand and twenty one and, and Thursday, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty one, thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one.
A second, Board Member Hannah.
Okay. Any questions, comments, objections?
Board Member Williams-Wolffert, I just wanted to know, is staff using their personal time or is this a paid holiday through the district?
A paid holiday through the district. Typically, the board grants off for December twenty fourth for Christmas, when you would have those two days off. Saturday is the actual day for, can you show the calendar again? Thank you. Saturday is also the actual day for the holiday, so we have the twenty third off. And the thirty first, it is closed because of the holiday. But typically, we have that as well as the first, and the first this year is on Saturday. So there would be no time. That would just be the two days that the district is closed.
So we did that last year. We gave it, we gave the eves off. Okay.
And typically they're during the week, but now it falls at the, on the weekend.
Any objection from any board members? Roll call, please.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Morris.
Yay.
Board Member David.
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Griffin.
Repeat.
Ms. Griffin?
Repeat.
Board Member.
Yay.
Thank you. Board Member.
Hold on, what's it?
Go ahead.
I'm here, but I don't know why. It might be my connection. Can you hear me?
We heard you. Thank you. Uh, Board Member Joyner-Herit.
Yay.
Jerel.
Board Member David.
Yeah. She got me.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the purchase of holiday gift certificates in the amount of forty dollars per person, please. It's not in black, but it's written out there, so it's fine.
That's going to be it.
Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to.
We can't hear you, Ms. Griffin, so we're going to let. We can't hear you, Ms. Griffin. You're in and out. Go right ahead.
I recommend approval to purchase holidays gift certificates in the amount of forty dollars per person for ninety five for the total of thirty eight hundred dollars to be paid from the educational fund.
A second, Board Member Hannah.
Any comments, board members? This is something that we do every year. We used to purchase turkeys. And so this is definitely more user-friendly, more flexible, just to be able to give a small token of appreciation during the holiday season. So without further to do, roll call, please.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert.
Yay.
Board Member Morris.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Joyner-Herit.
Yay.
Board Member David.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Moving on to board. There's a train outside. Moving on to Board President's report. I'm not going to take up too much of your time. Just wanted to, you know, we had the West Cook Dinner meeting Thursday. The topic of the dinner meeting is building resilience in students through trauma-informed practices. It's by Dr. Doug Bolton. I hear a lot of great things about this presentation is they're doing it all over the, the, the state. So registration is at five thirty. The dinner meeting begins at, the dinner starts at six forty five with a business meeting starting at seven thirty. Next on my agenda is the, the conference. We finally are going to be able to participate in a live joint annual conference from the nineteenth through the twenty first. The, it's called Educate, Inspire, and Lead. I think everybody, for the most part, most of us are going, those that are able to. So thank you. We're planning a great time of learning, but as well as bonding as a team, board, board team. Okay. Another thing I wanted to mention, the delegate assembly. You will be receiving your votes to review the, the resolutions. I believe there's fourteen resolutions. You'll be receiving those the first of November. And then if you could have them returned by the board meeting in November so that the delegate can tally them up and vote on behalf of our district. So thank you in advance. Last but not least, again, congrat- no, last but not least, I know last time we were here, we inducted our first student board member. And I'll tell you this, we asked Dr. Jackson to frame his oath of office. So at this time, the Board of Education would like to present you with your oath of office in this beautiful frame. You know, Dr. Jackson doesn't do anything simply. So again, thank you so much for being our, our first student board member, Master Jerel David. You know that I like to call him Master Jerel David. Here you go. I was going to mention Community Leader of the Year, but I think we've already taken care of that, so moving right along to our superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening again, and we have, we had October fourth, Zoo to You, Lindab Zoo. And so they came out to, out to us instead of our babies having to travel to them. The animals all came. They were in the back. I think the goat may have been a little temperamental, but the rest of them were perfect. A large rabbit we had as well and some, and a cow, a baby cow, which I had not seen before. So it was very interesting. Go ahead.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
Wait a minute. Have you all ever had a zoo come to your school? Come on. Is this fantastic? Jerel, what do you think about it?
Amazing. You know, I, that's just another thing that we're doing so well under Doc. You know, I, that's just another thing that we're doing so well under Dr. Jackson's leadership, as we were stating before. Amazing, amazing. I have never seen that happen before at all, so awesome again.
Thank you. I'm sorry, this couldn't pass that up.
This is board member Williams Wilford. I do congratulate Dr. Jackson and the entire early chapter. Because during this time of COVID, you know, a lot of people are uncomfortable about allowing children to participate in the traditional experiences that they normally do. And I just think this is really awesome to think out of the box but still give them that opportunity to experience, you know, animals in in different ways and whatnot. So I really think this was a great out-of-the-box thinking opportunity for our students. I I wish it could have been my program. But awesome job, Dr.
Almost wish you'd give us more details about how long was it, how long were they there?
So they were there till about one o'clock, and they came from a petting zoo. Don't remember the name of it. But there was some conversation about them going on the trip, and then everyone sort of came together. Only approved it, but it was the pre-K program along with Mr. Baranic and also along with the building that did agree that it would be better if they came to us instead of us going to them. And it worked out. Some of the babies went inside, you see. Others ran out of the inside, back outside. But it was good. It was good, and they enjoyed it.
Thank you, Mr. Baranic, too. Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne, for the cleanup. Thank you. Yes, next slide.
Okay, next is our sixth grade science elective. And so in this one, we're doing community gardening. And so you see the children out, and they're getting our courtyard together, and they've put up some scarecrows. But they're also going to be planting. They'll be planting some vegetables, some that will be okay for the winter. And then they will also beautify it with gardening. So this is something else that they are very, very excited about, and you can just sort of see how it's transformed and how excited they are with those little rakes in between their classes. So this is another example of how we're moving towards our Blue Ribbon Standards and making sure that we're doing something creative. Out of the way, Dr. Best, thanks so much for coming up with the electives. And I thank the teachers for agreeing at the very, right before we left for summer school and taking this on and saying that they would do the very best that they could. So thank you to them as well. Next on the list, congratulations to Mrs. Zynga. She's the winner of the We Appreciate Teachers contest, Back to School Illinois. And so she was nominated and just going above and beyond all of the time for her families, for her peers, working as a union executive leader and that as well. And just making sure that we have everything we we need to make sure that our pre-K students are receiving all of the resources that they can. So kudos and congratulations to Mrs. Zynga.
Thank you for that.
Uh, next, we had last Saturday, on the eighth, we had, or Saturday before last, we had our equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion workshop. And this was birthed out of our administrative retreat that we took, and we began to talk about equity, not just having it as a word and something that we read about, but something that we live. And so we brainstorm about who might be equity leaders within the district. Some were on the Zoom during that time, but the rest of us were in person to go out and to share. And what we also wanted to do was make sure that the admin was leading from the front. And so we are right there in there with them participating. And the one, one of the amazing things that Dr. May Mo Moot does, and she's out in the Naperville School District, is she actually shows equity in action, and she also actually talks about how she moves scores ahead just by implementing something different and also by getting to know her students. So that concludes, nope, not yet, Hispanic Month. Our little babies here, and that's how they used to celebrate it, National Hispanic Month. And so I think just every time you see them in their little piñatas and do everything, and there's some breros, it just sort of makes us happy, right? And so this is my closing remarks, almost. All right, next we have our Community Partner of the Year Award. Thank you so much, Mrs. Griffin and Mrs. Taylor, for attending that event. And as we won the Community Partner of the Year Award, we are partnering with Deborah Vines and Answer Inc. and offering our children sixth through eighth grade bullying. I know Dr. Jeremiah was responsible for getting those names together for any students that have been bullied, not their names, but the specific behaviors that we've been seeing so that they could tailor their curriculum to our needs exactly.
It's a beautiful picture.
Pfizer Vaccine Booster Clinic, okay, coming soon, coming Friday, October twenty ninth. And who's eligible? Those who are sixty-five years or older or eighteen or older with underlying medical conditions and those employed in high-risk settings such as schools and in healthcare. This will be for second-dose Pfizer participants, and they have to have been with their second dose at least four weeks prior to the clinic.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Moving on to student board member report.
Yes, so I have decided to create a student survey, and I would send it out before the next board meeting to get feedback from students. It was an idea that I had. I wanted to see what the students wanted to try to improve in our school district. They also have the time and the option to meet with me to air out some grievances. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get some of the feedback shared with Dr. Jackson, and then we're gonna converse on it and see how we can improve as a school district and as a school community around Broadview. I've also been doing a little peer mentoring during my time since I've been inducted into the board. I have one of my mentees here, Alisa Chacon, right there. Alisa, can you stand up for me, sweetheart? An amazing fifth grader who I've decided to mentor. She shows amazing leadership, and she is gonna be the next student board member for Lindup School. She's awesome. I have faith in her, and we're just getting ready to build our community and our school community back better and glomming in on a promise that we made not to leave the way, not to leave how we left and and to come back better. I've also been doing some sixth-grade speaking. I went to sixth-grade Madlock's class to speak with them. I also spoke with Ms. Hankins' homeroom as well. We had an innovative talk on how we can improve as a grade level and how we can improve as a school community.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. David? Can you tell me your mentor's name?
Alisa Chacon and.
Ms. Chacon, you had, you're highly recommended. You better get ready. Okay, thank you so much. All right. Committee reports. Finance committee meeting, that's Mrs. myself, as well as Ms. Griffin. We had our meeting Friday, October fifteenth at three thirty. And just to mention, we did discuss the levy, and we already went over it as a team, so no, nothing else needed to be discussed. Personnel committee meeting, there has not been one. There'll be, to be announced, to be determined. Pace governing board meeting. That's Mr. Dawson and Mr. Morris, was Wednesday, October thirteenth. Okay. Oh, so there wasn't one on the thirteen?
But it is this week of coming, so tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Safety SEL, that's something, another meeting to be determined. Policy meeting, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Williams Wilford. That was October sixth.
I can't hear, I'm sorry. I hear somebody talking.
Uh, sorry.
I, board member Dawson, thank you. I was just saying, at the the last policy meeting, we put in the second reads that we approved in our consent agenda tonight. Uh, but Dr. Jackson, was there anything that we really needed to bring up before the board this evening? I think it was standard fare for Press Plus One O.
Everything was standard. This is the second one. Most of them were changing the dates on the five-year reviews. And there were a couple policy edits, and it was pertaining to the people who were going to be in charge of different activities as directed by the policies.
Thank you. The parent technology strategic plan meeting, bond referendum committee meetings, these are all to be determined. Okay, moving on to public comments, and there are none at this time? Okay.
It's six thirty, you all.
That's all I can say. I needed a motion to go into executive session at six thirty.
Okay.
Let's keep it rolling.
That's right. Board member Hannah, I moved the board go into closed session under five I L C S one twenty dash two C one four nine ten to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the public body. Evidence of testimony presented in open hearing or a closed hearing where specifically authorized by law. Student disciplinary cases, the placement of individual students in special educational programs and other matters relating to individual students, and collectively negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their represent representatives at six thirty one P M.
And a second, please.
Second.
And a roll call.
Board member Joyner here.
Yay.
Board member Griffin. Board member Hannah.
Yeah.
Board member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board member Morris.
Yeah.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member David.
Yeah.
And that, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I think we got out early because we wanted to get Mr. Jared David out of here early. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you for being here.